We're gonna have to provide some locator information.
Yeah.
You may even have to pay a third party to come in and do locator. Because that's something that from an implementation standpoint, they're gonna wanna negotiate that in contract. And that's something that's very time consuming. Dedicated resources for that. We don't really have dedicated resources for doing locators. So it's like a project in the park with a drainage on the beach line. That contractor does his own location. So a road project and end up project, they do the locator stuff. For us to locate all those utilities with, you know, there's probably gonna be a cost to that because that's not.
So that's in kind?
If we did ourselves that, then otherwise.
Or if you farm it out.
I will have to come to council and ask.
So Rich, you can see in the committed funds section here that the totals that you were looking at before are net of all of these commitments.
Yeah, so I mean, this is a project that. Everything we can think of that we're committed to is on the spreadsheet.
Okay.
So we, this project, this broadband project is first in line. I mean, I don't think we can sit around and go, well, somebody's gonna come up with a great project two years from now or three years from now. We need to fund this thing so the contractor and then, you know, the contract to be negotiated and this thing can start.
And I would agree with that.
The quicker we get it done, the quicker we get it out to the public and it helps economic development in this town.
Most of the other projects that are coming down the pike in the way of sewer, et cetera, and the infrastructure for the Collins project are all going to be met with money.
Right.
Pretty much.
Well, that particular project.
Well, something, it would be either bond or something.
Yeah.
It's not going to be paid for at all one year.
The case of that project, they're looking at.
Yeah, this is one of them.
Yeah. We would be creating a new TIF district for that project. That district would, I'll get to that with the next agenda item. That tenth district will generate X amount of revenue that will be counted by Baker Tilly that can turn around and finance the utility infrastructure side of things. The CRC would probably be asked to commit a certain percentage of that over the course of, say, fifteen years or twenty years of the twenty-five-year life of that TIF. So it would be a self-sustained project with a certain percentage of the revenue where they couldn't commit that revenue to something else, has to stay committed to that if we work out that agreement with the developer. So it's outside of these revenues, is kind of what I'm getting at.
Right, right, yeah.
Let's let me ask this question again, has. We feel good about this company. We've seen evidence of what they've done before and it's been very, very successful. And I don't know how many meetings I've sat in over the years at the Academy where we were right on the edge of Nirvana, you know, with some new technological thing and, you know, turned around it, what even close. So I'm sure this is fiber optics is there and it's the way to go and it's what we need. But there is a guarantee that this in fact will deliver what they say will deliver.
Yeah, they installed in urban, they're all over Marshall County, they're all over the state.
They're in Argus. Not sure, but I mean, fiber optics.
Okay, yeah.
Westview.
We wanted to work with them in the past, or RTC accomplished somewhere to serve. But three, four years ago, that bill was five million dollars. And that's exactly what one of our proposals was for buried mines for five million versus half a million. Because the other company that submitted that proposal, they're not capitalized like this one is.
Can I say something? Rich is worried about the town not having some piece of this, right?
I agree with Jenny, we won't end up having some piece that he above beyond the five hundred and thirty-one dollars a dollar.
Yes, we will. It's hard, you can't have somebody digging in this town and that have the utility department in this town involved. You just can't. So you're going to be involved.
My major concern with the questions was ensuring that CRC did not hamstrump by just take on the whole thing.
That's fair. They don't look like they are.
Well, and I mean, looking at the figures is right, but those figures, I mean, I did not know. I knew about what your balance was in the month we reported, but I didn't know what those commitments were. I mean, I used to do that sheet to track those things, but I didn't know what was going forward and how that would affect the balance.
It's not like it was at one time going forward. I'm in a much better position today than we were, you know, three, four years ago with unbundled limits, like I said.
Gary, do you have a motion?
Yeah, I mean, I would make a CRC motion to fund this entire project for five hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. I'm sorry, five hundred and thirty-one thousand, twenty-three dollars and seventeen cents.
Seventeen one cent.
Seventeen cents.
Glad to say it from anybody else in CRC. I'll second that motion. Since Karen doesn't vote, I think we can just go ahead and we don't have to have a roll call.
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're ready for part two.
I am handing out a draft, I'll emphasize, resolution. The ready, the local ready committee met to discuss projects. The one solid one we know, we have four on because we have private funding. And just so, if you're not aware, with a ready grant, you take the total project cost, let's call it ten million just for easy round figures. Sixty percent of that has to come from private funding. Twenty percent of it is the ready grant and twenty percent is a match from local government or redevelopment. So the idea of ready then is to attract private investment in your community for your project. The one that we have someone who wants to do the development on the south end of town that you all are aware of. They are very interested in us applying for a ready grant because housing qualifies for ready dollars. And what we're told is it, from all the meetings they've had with us, it needs to be a rather large housing project and something transformational, something that will impact on the region. This is obviously a large housing project. So I reached out to Mr. Collins and his attorney, Burke Richardson, to talk about the fact that the deadline is August fifteenth. That doesn't mean that everything has to be shovel-ready and perfect to go. The ready committee from South Bend Alcart is telling us that by the end of 2024, everything has to be lined up and ready to go financially, construction-ready, et cetera. By the end of 2026, you have to have spent the money. So it sounds like a long time, but it's really not. As you all know from working on stellar projects, these can be two to four-year-long type of projects. Mr. Collins' first phase of his housing project is he has an estimate of nine point eight million on that. The good news of that is if it's under ten million, we can void a tax situation on his end. So knowing that we would be trying to apply for twenty percent of that nine point eight and that nine point eight million dollar phase would include utilities and infrastructure. You can't do phase two if you don't have utilities in and you don't have roads started. So I went back and looked at some of the stellar resolutions and some of the other legal documents we put together for these types of projects. And I've written a resolution that I wanna just quickly go through. I'm not asking for a vote tonight unless you're perfectly comfortable with that. But I would be asking for you to vote on this before August fifteenth because if I'm gonna fill out and take the time to do a grant application with their attorney, et cetera, I'm gonna need to know. And we do not have to have exact numbers. We have to have a support letter, a commitment type of letter that says we're willing to make this match. It could be that when we actually crunch numbers, it becomes a nine point one million dollar project. It's a little bit like when we did regional cities with Kevin Berger. We did not, the CRC did not have quite the expense we were expecting to pay for utilities, infrastructure there. So Kevin didn't get the full amount of that regional cities grant. So, you know, nothing's gonna work out to the penny on these projects, just, you know, FYI. So what I've said is, you know, whereas the town of Culver's applied for ready grant funding and whereas the Culver Redevelopment Commission has identified certain housing projects and improvements and it has identified funds to be pledged and authorized for sub-projects and whereas Culver Redevelopment is creating a new tax incremental financing district in which to locate that housing project and improvements, now therefore let it be resolved. And in this resolution, I've listed how I think this would work for us. First line being CRC would be pledging and authorizing a regional cities matching expense toward a ready award to support a nine point eight million dollar housing development project and improvements. Those funds would be used for extension of municipal water, sewer, and road infrastructure. We could not use them, for example, to put up siding, roofing, et cetera. The Culver Redevelopment Commission would authorize up to seventy percent of the total tax incremental financing created from the new tax incremental district in which the housing development would be located. This district will be located on the west side of South Main Street from Davis Street to Tammerack Road. So I'm basically saying, once we form that incremental tax district, we would not commit more than seventy percent of those funds to this ready match. And I only came up with that number because of some of the conversations we've had with Mr. Richardson and Al. CRC financing for the utility and road infrastructure shall be contingent upon the property owner. And I don't have the name of his new LLC for this, I intend to insert that there. Signing a development agreement with the town of Culver and Culver Redevelopment Commission. In other words, we're only gonna make the match if he signs a development agreement. And that's a requirement of annexing his Tammerack Road property. It's not a requirement of this one because it's been annexed, but we do require development agreements when we're giving CRC funding. The Culver Redevelopment Commission intends to approve funding and execute the necessary contract agreements on behalf of the town to complete the project listed herein for the purposes of the ready project if the ready funds are awarded. If they're not, this agreement doesn't mean any, this resolution wouldn't mean anything. The Culver Redevelopment Commission may pursue additional grants that would be of assistance in funding this. And the funding herein will provide overall matching funds for ready. I've also noted the funds must be TIF-eligible expenses as required by Indiana Code. I found that line in just about everything we produced during the stellar and regional cities agreements. So knowing we're thinking about working out this agreement with Mr. Collins and Wayne McGee, I've kind of outlined that why not go after some ready dollars? And maybe then we would have less of our own dollars involved. And the way that expenditure agreement works is if we create that TIF district, we prove we have the revenue to support the expense of utilities, the bank gives Mr. Collins that money upfront and it's our TIF money making the payment on his loan. So.
We pledge that TIF money, basically.
Yeah, and because it would be upfront, you know, that's how, that's how you get your twenty percent toward ready. Because ready is not gonna say, oh, you can pay it over twenty-five years.
Right.
But that's also not how that works on the developer end anyway. He's getting money to pay for that.
And the CRC commitment in this, in this scenario is about two million dollars paid for presumably by the new TIF over time.
Yeah, it would be twenty percent of the nine point eight.
One point, not one point nine, something.
Now, in that development agreement, we could also include if CRC said, we'll commit the dollars to this development agreement only if, you know, these houses are priced as such or only if you put a trail in or only if you, you know, we would have some room in the agreement depending on what you all would wanna do with that, particularly if forty percent of this phase one is, you know, covered.
I got two questions and your nine point eight million, you said it could come in at nine point one. Should you have language in there say that says not to exceed nine point eight million? You want that language in there? And the second question is.
We would not exceed that number in the ready application. So it's really to support a ready award or ready application, so.
For maximum, you see what I'm asking?
Yeah, either way, I'm not filling out an application that's over nine point eight million.
Okay, and then on this agreement, Jim Clevenger will look at it?
Yeah, that's my plan.
And Phil Fessenden too, yeah, both of them, yeah. Because it's TIF.
Phil's been active with the Collins redevelopment.
Right. And I, yeah.
He and Jen both have had meetings with Burke and Collins. We kind of had both of them involved.
Right, yeah, right.
But anyway, it's a draft. Again, if we don't do this tonight, we need to do it before August fifteenth. So in that case, if you don't wanna vote on this tonight, we could maybe meet a week from today and do a special session for CRC.
Before council next week.
Our next CRC meeting is the fifteenth.
I know.
But you could do a special meeting before council meeting next Tuesday.
You're meeting and not have two in a row and put other stuff on the agenda if you'd like. This can just be one agenda item. If you wanna do it next Monday.
Or two, yeah.
I definitely don't wanna do it the day of the applications due because it's gonna be a nightmare between now and then anyway.
Sally, I'll defer to you, you're the president.
Will? Other than. Did we, what do you think of, what are your thoughts on passing it this evening with the caveat the right wording for his LLC is in there and that the attorneys approve of it?
So just to clarify this in my mind, so all we're really doing here, we're not, we're seeding future revenues from the new TIF district.
From the new TIF district, right.
To a private and a private enterprise to subsidize their development of the infrastructure.
And we're, this is basically telling the ready committee, the RDA, that we would be committing to a match if they award us money.
Okay, so we have.
And if they don't, if they don't award you money, it's null and void.
Okay.
Yeah, and this definitely is contingent on him signing a development agreement with you as well. All that would have to be worked out before end of 2024.
Okay. What needs to be done to create that new TIF?
A lot of legal work.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Another item on our budget.
Yeah, it was. Okay, right.
Yeah.
But to your.
Well, and I wasn't for that. I was here for that session where she explained being doing this rule.
To your earlier point, none of this revenue is on the dashboard, right?
Right.
All right, this is outside of the dashboard universe.
That's established.
Right.
And that's one reason I put that paragraph in, this has to come off as established TIF. You can't just have our other money. If we don't get it done.
Nothing happens.
Right, right, okay.
Right.
And I'll, I mean, I, yeah, I wanna confirm that with the attorney that I've written it in a way that protects us. Because I'm definitely not a legal expert on any of this.
And then.
It was just me digging.
Sure, and this seventy percent authorized up to seventy percent, that'll be dependent on how the numbers turn out, right? But we can't go more than seventy percent of the revenue.
You probably have to consult another physician and he said, oh, we're okay with eighty percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just put that because I didn't know if you guys would be comfortable. I didn't wanna put up to a hundred percent of it either.
Yeah, no, that's great.
So is it fair to say that we would be approached and are into a development agreement regardless of whether or not the ready grant is?
Yes.
And in that circumstance, so I'm thinking, is there, is there a, this would seem to be, since we're supporting, the ready grant would go to the developers. So by doing this, we're working to support the developer. Is there an additional consideration we get for doing this versus what would come down the line if we don't?
To me, the only thing really important in this type of developments in a TIF area is utilities and road. And so this money, this is specifically written that if we get ready dollars, it will only go toward these type of expenses. And my hope was that would mean your expenses as redevelopment would be less. That's kind of what I'm aiming for by doing the grant at all. But it does presume that you were interested in doing an agreement with them to some degree, yeah.
And without, and without the ready grant, there's still the vehicle or mechanism through the new TIF regulations, the bond issue to support basically the same type of structure. It's just the ready grant dollars aren't getting there with the ready grant.
So you're doing. Yeah, Burke was approaching us to do an expenditure agreement or bond. Our attorney kind of leans more toward bond versus expenditure agreement. So the thought being, okay, we're looking at spending, making an investment in this development. Maybe we start with trying to get the grant dollars first.
Yeah. Rich, if we get the ready dollars, that would cut our costs by twenty percent roughly, the CRC.
Over the course of the project?
Yeah, over the course of the project.
And keep in mind, the ready committee has said, we may not fund every project the full twenty percent. They will prioritize certain things, like if, if you're meeting the goals of South Bend Alcart's RDA ready committee and you're attracting talent and attention and workforce and some of the other goals, they have population growth. Well, this clearly needs population growth, right? But they may say, well, we'll do fifteen percent of the nine point eight. Yeah.
But I think we could vote on anything that's better than nothing.
Well, nothing ventured, nothing gained.
But what Sally indicated, I think we could vote on it based upon the attorney's and so on. Good with that.
Hey, do I have a motion to approve this resolution twenty-two, or twenty thousand twenty-two, day zero zero one? So I'm moved with the, with the. Assuming that the attorneys approve of this contract and any minor changes.
Certainly, if the red flag email, I need to come back to it.
And the name of this property is correct at the time. He's printing. We have a motion.
Second.
Second from Tony. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
I also get it out to both attorneys just now that they will send us a bill for that. I'm sorry, I'm assuming you're okay with that being as well.
What this enables us to do is just to move forward as quickly as possible and as quickly and as prudent as possible in getting these two projects going. And, you know, with the commitment that, you know, CRC gave us tonight, you know, hopefully it'll get some of these other people that got wish lists off their rear ends and come to us because they can see that CRC is willing to make commitments and the town's willing to make a commitment too. I mean, you go back to, to the Fiber Hut. I mean, they're increasing the size of that Fiber Hut because we're going with SURF. And, you know, I think the original cost to put that Fiber Hut in was around seventy-five thousand dollars. And now they're gonna be committing, I've heard around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars because it needs to be a lot larger. So, you know, we did, and we did shorten the lease from fifty years to twenty-five years with renewable at that time. So, I mean, we're moving forward.
If media isn't on, I would like to write a press release on fiber coming to Culver and some of the things the broadband fiber task forces have talked about is educating the public along the way and helping to sort of market this as an option. So we need to get that sort of rolling too. I'd like to put something together. I wanna have you all authorize me to send that with the fiber task force's approval because they're the ones really touched with why we wanna put certain messaging out there. And we have a consultant on that task group. Yeah, anything I would put out, but we need to announce to the public this happening.
Well, and what's really exciting is that it can happen as quickly as maybe it can happen.
That, that's the amazing, amazing part.
Do I have a motion from council to allow Jenny to go ahead and put together a press release on these two items? Most of them made and seconded that we allowed Jenny to work on press release on the broadband as well as the ready grant.
And should I do the same for CRC? Is there a motion from CRC to?
Let me get this one done.
Oh, okay.
All right, for council, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close and sign, motion carries.
Question related to that, should, this is probably gonna be going on for a while. Should there be a face, like, I don't know, is your committee chaired by anybody? I mean, you're involved in all of these different things, but I wonder if it might be an opportunity for somebody else on that committee to become the face of this with the media. I don't know.
Yeah, if I can get a volunteer, that'd be great.
Your face.
You don't want this face on.
I'm gonna quote the task force members in it anyway and get their permission. Just because I think that's like, they've put a lot of time into this.
If the CRC members have a motion to approve Jenny writing this letter and putting her names on it.
Well, you know, you're doing the press release.
Yeah, press, the letter, press.
Yeah, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just a technical.
Let's see, what else we got? Next, we have citizen input. Is there anyone online for citizen input?
Kind of a little late for that right now, right?
Anyone in the room for citizen input?
Of that broadband benefit by the town, five hundred and thirty thousand, is any of that recoverable through any kind of municipal taxes that might be assessed on? On the, so if I were.
Not that I know of, but that's.
I just thought, does the town benefit financially by accessing through?
For redevelopment or?
Well, no, through billing. Is there any line item on the bill?
There would be a utility tax associated with something like this.
That I'm aware of. Yeah, not that I know of either, and I think it's all the agreement between the provider and user. So if there is a tax there, I'm unaware.
If we, if we look at my MediaCom bill right now, just get internet, there's no tax for internet.
Right, it's just a flat.
But for leasing the modem and the two amplifiers, there's sales tax on it. But for leasing the modem and the two amplifiers, there's sales tax on it. But when, you know, you get cable, there's all these franchise taxes, this and that. I don't think that's migrated into the internet space, those taxes, so.
May I have this citizen input?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks everybody for thanking the committee for their work on this.
Yes.
Yes.
Any council issues? Council issues, Rich, you got anything? Bill? I don't. Much of their turn?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Where you go?
Was there something in the facade thing or was that be taken up next?
That's all, full team.
Look at that at the CRC meeting room fifteen.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved, next.
Aye.
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 Thank you all. Yeah, I appreciate you and.